Okay.
So, yes, that'll be captured in the recording.
Okay. Oh, how minutes are there things that need to be fixed in the minutes? I apologize, they've kind of gone out again, got out late.
I think I sent them out.
Well, this is Carol.
Or Tuesday.
This is Carol. I had one correction just for the kind of the record on on page two where Christine Jordan was talking about the fuel, the programmatic fuels project they were working on targeted, it's first paragraph targeted to key ridge top areas, wild and urban interfaces, roadside areas, and it's instead of ingress egress.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, just just so people know that one of the reasons for that format tool is evacuation in case of fire, the ingress egress. But I just wanted to kind of have that in the record.
Okay, anybody else, any other edits, changes, comments on the minutes? No?
This is Jerry. I don't have any changes, but I'm wondering, is Fish and Wildlife on the call this morning?
I don't see anybody.
No.
See anybody? And I didn't get any emails from Christine saying that she was going to be on, so or anybody else who's going to be.
Scott, did you talk to them? Because they heard that they they clear through you or go through.
Yeah, we we talked on our call this week. We had a level two call on Wednesday and and we we talked about, you know, the their engagement in this meeting and kind of the status update on stuff we're working with. And there really hasn't been much change. It didn't feel like that I felt like I could represent, you know, the two of us and are working there. So they're not going to be, I don't think, today.
So update during your report then, huh?
Yep.
Good.
Yeah. Okay, so are there any time sensitive items that are not on the agenda that need to be added to the agenda? Anybody have anything? No? Okay. And then, so this is a next thing on the agenda shows public input. And so we have a number of people who have not participated in the collaborative as active members. So this is a time for you to bring up items that you want us to know about, want us to think about scheduling for future agendas sort of thing. And the way our 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 rules kind of work is the guests, the people who are not active members pretty much have to are here to listen and learn, you know, about what the collaborative is doing, not actively engage in the discussions and certainly not vote on anything if we have anything to vote on. So I just wanted to remind folks of that, if that's the role you're playing today. So anybody from the public side of things, I know Jill, you would fit in that category. Ozley, you would fit in that category. So any anybody have anything they want to bring up who is not a member?
Diana?
Diana.
Oh, sorry, I am a member, I think, still, but.
Yeah, you are.
Okay, good, thanks, Pat. So I'm just concerned still about, and I don't, yeah, about the fire danger in Trinity County. And I'd like to hear more on that. Is that, does that cover any, I mean, does that cover today?
Yeah, under other other updates towards the bottom is update on fire season.
Thank you. I saw that.
You're welcome. Yeah, so that should that should cover.
Thank you. And what time is that? You know, I I don't, I didn't, my my printer was messing up. So I didn't get to print out the agenda, but I did look at it and the collective conversation from last time. But what time is that for sure? I mean, as best as possible.
Eleven forty.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. Okay, so anybody then from on the public side, anything that they wanted to say right now? Don't go, you have to. Arnold, you've got, you're lit up.
Um, I don't know why.
Okay. That's fine. Okay, so with that said, on to forestry issue. So Jennifer, what's what's shaking on the BLM side of things?
Well, you know, same old, same old, week eighteen of telework. So just a few updates. So from the Reading BLM, we closed out the Holy Peaks salvage sale from the car fire that ended up being about 1.2 million board feet total. As you guys are aware, we attempted to sell the east side salvage, so kind of phase two of the salvage sales from the car fire. It went no bid at the end of January. We reoffered it as a negotiated sale and again went no bid at the end of February. So now we're assessing the potential to open the area as a firewood and potential commercial firewood area. So still working to get at least the roadside hazard trees dealt with from that portion of the car fire since salvage was not via. Working on salvage operations on the campfire. So they're in Butte County, working two different sales down there off the campfire. As far as new NEPA goes, we are starting NEPA on about 100 to 150 acres green thin out in Reading Indian Creek. We had some, we've had some fuels work going on in the area, but we do have some portions that we feel are more appropriate for a forestry thinning. So Heidi will begin looking at, you know, options there for treatments. And she's estimating at this point, it's very preliminary, somewhere between 700,000 to 1.2 million board feet. So kind of in the early phases. So if there's interest in engaging in that project with Heidi, as soon as she comes off of the salvage work on the campfire, let me know and we can engage the collaborative in kind of design and NEPA on that project. Um, and then really the last thing for Trinity. It took us a while to find hosts, but we do now have all of our campgrounds in Trinity County open, including Douglas City and Junction City. Just of note, in Douglas City, the showers are not open and available just due to cleaning issues related to COVID. But they are all finally now back and open. So if you're looking for a place to go camping, we're up and ready. And I think that's it forestry related to BLM.
So I'm trying to remember from the Community Forest Steering Committee meeting, isn't there a project over Little Browns Creek also?
So we've been doing some thinning, like roadside thinning work on the road, and then there is a project. So that's been kind of ongoing. It's paused for now, but I think we'll come back when we have access to the cow fire crews again. And then also working with the RCD on a larger project out in that area that I think Ozley is trying to get kind of back up and running.
Okay.
Thanks, Pat, for the reminder.
Any questions for Jennifer? Diana?
I've got. Hello, how to. Jennifer, this is Kenneth Baldwin. I'm definitely interested in the green sale out here on Reading Creek to Indian Creek. So if you could keep me on the list to inform me about that, I would appreciate it.
No problem. I'll let Heidi know.
Thank you.
Diana?
Thank you. So I wanted to ask Jennifer concerning the campfire. What side of the ridge are they working on such you mentioned that? And let me see, maybe how many crews or how many people or whatever that is? What side? Yes?
So we have two different, as far as the campfire in Paradise, we have two different sales. I don't know how familiar you are with the Paradise area. One is off of. Okay, so one's off of the Dean Dean Road area, and that sale is currently ongoing. It's a fairly small sale, less than 250,000 board feet. And then in Upper Ridge, so we have a BLM has a large parcel in the Upper Ridge, Upper Ridge area near Megalia that is wholly surrounded by houses and a school. So that's kind of our next big, you know, shift is to, we actually had planned a green sale and a prescribed fire. We signed the burn plan on that document the same week that the campfire started. So now we had to shift gears and do a salvage sale instead of a green sale and prescribed fire.
Thank you, Jennifer.
You're welcome.
Those houses are. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else, anything for Jennifer? No? Okay, so Forest Service and NRCS kind of a what what's new with regards to Joint Chiefs this season? And I have to do rock, paper, scissors to decide who goes first.
Yeah, I'll I'll take that. Good morning, everybody. Can can you see me, hear me?
Yep.
Great, great. So Joint Chiefs, some pretty good news to report. We received about $535,000 this this past fiscal year. And we only have $1,800 left, so we came pretty close. There was a good portion of that that we used for planning on the WCF project. But for implementation, over $400,000 were spent on the Browns Phase Three fuels and Dubacella prescribed burn. So of course, most of the money going to implementation, that's what we want. This will be our third year coming up. We we anticipate receiving about the same amount, a little over half a million dollars for fiscal year 21. That usually comes in December. And so I said, as a repeat, that we hope to receive the same amount. And so we're looking forward to that. Where are we going to be spending that money? I asked Dan Ossman and Laura Graham, our fuel specialists, and they've indicated Five Cent Understory Prescribed Fire, West Weaver Understory Prescribed Fire, and the Weaverville Community Forest Mastigation and Timp Fire, I'm sorry, Tipper's Pile Burning. And so on the SFMU, Dan reports that for fiscal year 21, we will be putting funding towards a burn module contract and some mastication in the Dubacella plantations. So that's that's what we have for Joint Chiefs.
Great. Thank you, Joe. So any questions of Joe, and then we'll get Six Rivers and NRCS.
Yeah, I have a question. I've heard Trump on the news saying that he's going to be making it easier to get projects done. I assume that means cutting back on the NEPA required. Have you heard anything about that?
This is Joe speaking. I I've heard those things too in the news. But as it stands, we have regulations and 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 what we have. If there's any changes, it comes from the Washington office down to the regional office, and it filters down to the forest. And so we have today has changed a little bit, but not greatly. I would say we're always making progress for efficiency, right? But when it tears to those types of communications that the media puts out, sometimes those are very broad, very overreaching. And sometimes we get that information. But when it really comes down to implementation, we have to have those those guidelines in our CFRs or regulations that we adhere to.
Ah, okay, thanks.
Yeah, who's the question?
That was Kenneth.
So Joseph, soon.
Yes. What did you want?
Oh, your 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 little box just lit up, so I thought you had a question.
Well, in in that regards, I was just looking to see what EA I read this in. But recently I read a document that said with the CE regulations now, there's no need to notify the public and there is no recourse for the public. Is that truly the case? That when you're doing a CE that there won't be scoping and public input and no recourse?
Yeah, Joseph.
You wanted me to take that, Joe, or do you want to take that one?
I'll just say a few words to that, and then Scott, you can probably come in. Yeah, Joseph, that that's a really a good question. We do scope on our CE projects, just as evidence with the our Weaverville Community Forest Fuels and Recreation Project, we do scope for those. We feel like those types of CE's that have a big impact in the community, absolutely, we want people to make those comments on those projects. So I think in in terms of the WCF project, certainly, certainly, we will continue to do that. Scott?
Yeah, that that's right, Joe. So Joseph, we 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 do scope those projects, but we don't have the draft review prior to decision or the objection process with CE's. That's that's the difference. Hey. Okay, so I want to take Six Rivers. I'll let Ranger Larg talk about what's going on with Two Chiefs on the district.
Okay.
Okay, am I unmuted?
Yep, we can hear you.
Okay, let's see. Sorry, I'm multitasking here. Oh, there we go, there's some video. Okay, so Joint Chiefs, I, you know, Nancy is my subject matter expert on that, but I do have her spreadsheet. So I'm gonna do my best here to make sure I capture everything. You know, you all know Nancy, and she's a powerhouse, and she's got a lot of things going on and a lot of projects. So with with Joint Chiefs, so she says here that she's got currently, there's 400,000 that's still allocated through 2024 with the greenhouse gases, the grant with with Hayfork. So she's got that. We're working on our capability right now. We have that reply due. And so she was working on on some numbers for me as well. But those are still going on, the Kelsey Mechanical Fuels Treatment, the Beaver Slide Fuels Treatment, Mag Ridge Fuel Break, the Van Dusen, D70. So we have all these projects that are either currently going on or will be coming on on deck for the fuels reduction portion of it treatment. And those are all included. And then, you know, the North Dobbin sod, so we're finishing up that. And that was going to move into some burning, pile burning there. But she's also, and we're, actually, I have a meeting with her this afternoon to look over some of her proposals for next year. But she's just has those agreements and is is working through them with the funding that she's already received and a lot of moving parts there. So we'll probably have a little bit better update after we work through some of the process with the FLT with what our capability for for next two years. But, you know, she's she's got it going all with Forest Account and, you know, Forest Service employees and grants and agreements and contracts. So that's unless you have some questions, I know that was kind of vague, I'm I'm done with my report.
Hey. Anybody, any questions for Kristen on Joint Chiefs related projects? Got to give people time to unmute, so I got to remember to slow down. No? Okay, so Erin, how about how about NRCS and their Joint Chiefs? We haven't heard in a while from you guys. So what what's been going on with Joint Chiefs?
Yeah, good morning, everybody. Some of you may not know me, but I'm a new face to the Trinity County Weaverville Office. So since April, I was acting as a district conservationist. And so I actually just accepted the position and will be starting officially mid-August. And so with that being said. Oh, thank you, appreciate it. So with that being said, for NRCS's Joint Chiefs of Trinity County Watersheds Program, we're currently in year two of three. So it started last fiscal year in 2019 and will end at the end of fiscal year 2021. So for 2020, we had about $100,000 allocated for the Joint Chiefs Fun Pool is what we call it. So of that, we had, we picked up two private landowner applications that was a cumulative of about $64,000 of that 100,000. So we'll just be working on basically obligating those applications and turning them into two separate contracts. And we'll be working on developing additional plans as participants will voluntarily work with us. And so we have about another year left of planning. And so very brief Joint Chiefs report, and I was hoping to dive in a little bit more into NRCS specific programs in a later on in the agenda. So with that being said, I'll just add that. And if anyone happens to have any questions, I could take them out.
Any questions on Erin, for Erin on the Joint Chiefs piece of things? And I'm assuming you have about 100,000 in the next, the third fiscal year too, right?
About so, yeah, we can, it it just kind of depends on what the the community interest is. And we, I mean, we don't know exactly what next year's funding looks like. We can only ask and see if we receive.
Okay.
Yeah, this is Jerry. I have a question on, just in general, on Joint Chiefs, finishing up the third year, the end of it. Isn't there another Joint Chiefs three-year round in our, in somebody's pocket?
There's different geographical areas that we we're constantly receiving Joint Chiefs and on the NRCS level around Northern California and across the state even, and also on a nationwide level. But specifically for Northern California, the Trinity County ends in fiscal year 2021. But we do have new ones that came available, say, in like Delmore County. And I think there was a couple in like, there's one in Los Padres National Forest Area. So that's just specifically for Trinity that ends in 2020.
Yeah, Jerry, we we have, we, Jerry, we haven't started that process yet.
The process of applying or the process?
Yeah, for the next, for the next proposal.
Gotcha.
We had, you know, the, we we did, I think, the original was in 2015, and it was effective 2016 to 2019, if I remember correctly. And I think we we at towards the end of that process, we began the proposal for the next round, which was, you know, effective 2019 through 2021.
Okay.
We will probably be looking at that, you know, later this year or early next year.
Time, time just goes by so quickly. I thought there was still more.
Yeah, it's amazing how quick that happens.
Hey, thanks.
Yeah, thanks, Kelly.
Joseph?
Hello?
Yeah.
I don't have anything to say.
Okay.
Hey, Pat, I I think what happens is that those folks don't have their their audio muted. Every time they make a noise, it lights up.
Oh, you got it. Okay.
We haven't been getting.
I'm not going to tell Joe to mute.
I've just.
Okay, so. So Erin, as the agenda rolls, the next thing is just general NRCS stuff. So you can kind of keep on keeping on. So forestry, other 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 stuff that you guys have going on that's not Joint Chiefs, but not the Oak Woodland, that's a separate agenda item.
Right, right. So I guess I just have to kind of pick and choose because I did prepare a little short PowerPoint presentation that kind of ties in together. So I guess I could let you decide, Pat, how you would like me to move forward. So I did prepare just a general overview PowerPoint that kind of introduces myself as well as an overview of the NRCS programs for those on the call today that aren't familiar with it. And then I was hoping to just kind of tie it all together to segue later into the RCPP Oak Woodland portion.
Well, I I think people generally are familiar with NRCS's role, you know, in conservation practices in Trinity County. So I don't know that we need to really do that kind of tutorial. But, you know, certainly people, I think, would like to get to know you better. So if they're, however you want to handle it, and and I I'm hands-free, I don't, I don't do the hosting, that's Kelly. So he'll have to help you with the, if we, if you're going to use the slideshow. We need to be cognizant of our time. We have until noon total, total time, so.
I did.
Can you?
I did share the, the share screen is available if you wanted to do that, Erin.
Okay, well, um, well, if I'll just go ahead and just for the sake of time, just move forward without a PowerPoint then. And so.
You could post the PowerPoint on that website.
Sure, I can do that.
Yeah, you can send it to us. Yeah, that would be great. Good idea, Kenneth.
Erin directly, then I can get that posted.
Will do. Okay, so as far as NRCS forestry project related updates. So we do have a general forest land fun pool that if landowners don't quite fit into the Joint Chiefs geographical boundaries or the RCPP, then they, we do have a general forest land fun pool available. And so we were able to pick up two new additional applications that got selected for funding this fiscal year. And so we'll continue to work with those landowners and help them see through implementation of their conservation practice. All of it, of course, relates to forestry fuels reduction on the property. And so with that being said, NRCS is just busy, busy right now wrapping up our fiscal year. And so trying to close out the active contracts as well as create new ones. The way our operating procedures are currently operating is, so the office there physically is closed to the public and until further notice. And so NRCS continues business with making appointments over the phone. We can operate out in the field and meet with landowners. However, we do have to abide by the social distancing, safety guidelines. And so we're trying to do the best we can with the uncertain times. And so if anyone is interested or we are always accepting new applications at any point in the year. It's just a matter of when our ranking deadlines are set. We don't have that information. It doesn't really get released until the beginning of the calendar year, give or take. So we can just assume that we will have our next round of funding available sometime in the spring of 2021.
So Erin, what kind of funding, I mean, sorry, what kind of staff is in the NRC's office now? Do you have a forester?
Sure, yeah. So we still have Carrie Nichols, our partner contract forester. So she's working part-time, so her time's pretty limited. And then we also have Anna Carson, who's our farm bill assistant that helps with administrative side. So she's also working part-time. And a good question, because we are, so in addition to me coming on board next month, we were able to hire a soil conservationist. It's a recent. It's a recent graduate from HSU, and it's, it'll be her first time working with the agency. So there'll be some transitioning time, of course, needed to get her acquainted with the agency and the overview and how, how our programs work. So she'll also be starting next month as well. So we're looking at two full-time NRCS staff and then also two part-time. Thank you. You're welcome.
So any, any other questions for Erin? So the, the, the general pool, do you have Erin, that's pretty, that's equipped pretty much?
Correct, yeah, so everything is kind of lumped into equip generally, but we also have different programs as well that I included in that PowerPoint, so feel free to reach out to me. I included my contact information and email for those that would like to follow up with me at a later point in time.
Okay, cool, thanks. Okay, so the Fuel Break Work Group, I wanted an update maybe on, there was a field trip to Acre Wood to look at the mark. So I don't know who from the shaded, the Fuel Break Work Group wants to take that on, but anyway, maybe an update on that?
I'll, I'll start if, if everybody wants to chime in, that'd be great. Just in terms of the fuel trip, actually a very good turnout, I think, because of the COVID-19, we each had to drive out there in our own vehicles. But it turned out, probably had 17, 18 people on the trip. And looking at a number of different things, one is the location where the Fuel Break, Acre Woods Fuel Break was proposed, is kind of along a main ridge line, but it's also split up a little bit more. There's additional work around the guard station up near. And we looked at two different sites, mainly right around the guard station itself. Predominantly dug fir type stand, a little bit of pine in it, looked at the mark there. And we got into a discussion of how, at least at this point, it looks like the mark is meeting the objective, the white paper objective of picking the best trees to leave for shade, for the shaded fuel break, and then to take out trees that are competing or would compete with those best trees. The discussion at that point turned out to whether the description in the project proposal actually met that. And most of the work group felt like it did not. Too much discussion was, we felt was based on still the old basal area and thin from below type language. And after further discussion, both the Forest Service and the work group felt like there was an understanding and the actual mark on the ground. And from the field trip we took on First 48, the actual results of what we were looking for match up pretty well. So it's just the language in the proposal and how we can write that cooperatively to actually meet what we believe the objective is. So after that, we then drove further up the ridge, right where the main ridge we felt would be, which is right at the break-in slope where fires coming out of the south-southwest, blow up the ridge and then hit this big, large, flat area. And it was an area that we had agreed could possibly be extended out beyond the 300-foot to utilize as kind of a sample area as to what it would look like if we expanded out to six, up to 600 feet. And in that area, the mark was done. We again reviewed the mark there. It was a more of a mixed forest, more white fir, dug fir mix. And the choice of which trees to leave was a little more difficult because the white fir tends to want to grow in an understory condition. And the hope is that we can maintain these dug fir as the predominant shade tree. However, in a lot of cases, the dug fir was showing weakness in terms of crown, crown capacity. And in those cases, the mark was actually leaving a white fir that looked healthier and would last in the canopy longer. So the discussion again there was tree species, which is important, white fir, dug fir. And the consensus kind of came to, well, whatever is the best tree that the marker is looking at at the time, leave that tree and take out the, a worse-looking tree or a tree that's competing with the better tree, regardless of species. That was my take on it. I'll let other people jump in as they will.
Thanks, Tom.
This is Joseph. Another thing that I think came out of the trip was how to describe the cleanup. Because in our prescription, we wanted the first 100 feet off of the road to 100% cleanup. So the Forest Service folks thought by 100% that meant doing a Donald Trump rake-up of the forest to bare soil. Well, you know, that wasn't really the intent. The intent was to, you know, meet some soil or some retention for soil quality. And so anyway, I think that we have defined a better, a better way to describe that as keeping the fuel load to flame lengths that would be less than one foot. So, you know, maybe in future documents, it can be described that, that way. And our prescription was for the first 100 feet to be 100% cleanup, and then beyond that, lop and scatter. But this fuel, this idea of a fuel bed that would limit fuel lengths to about one foot, that would be, I think, quite satisfactory with everybody. What do others think?
This is Keith Greenwood. Can I chime in on that?
Sure, Keith.
Yeah, so.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I, I have a little concern about a one-foot flame length under fire conditions. That's pretty difficult to achieve. The, my understanding of a flame length, most targets are more like a four-foot flame length, which enables crews to get in there and work on the ground. If you try and get to a one-foot flame length, you'll probably be closer to what you were thinking about that you just described you didn't want. So that's my two cents there.
This is Kristen. Can I, I would have raised my hand, but I can't seem to find the little icon for it. And that is a correction to that. When I, when I talked about that modeling on the field trip, it was a four-foot flame length, which is the common metric that we model for, for fire behavior. So I just wanted to make that correction, that it is a four-foot, not a one-foot flame length.
Yeah, this is Tom. I would chime in kind of similar thoughts. To get a one-foot flame length, the fuels would be almost too wet to be able to get them to burn. It's, it's really difficult to have fuels that are dry enough that they'll actually carry a fire and have a one-foot flame length or lasts. That would be a pretty, pretty wet fuel, pretty hard to carry a fire. So I think the three to four foot seems pretty reasonable as well.
Okay. Others from the, from the Fuel Break Group, anything else to add to the Acre Wood?
It was a good meeting.
Yeah, I, I thought, I thought that we did a good job of communicating with our new ranger and got a lot of misunderstandings cleared up. It always seems to happen when we get out in the forest and are able to talk to each other on-site and point to particular trees. So I thought it was very successful.
Thank you, Larry. So let me ask, Tom, in your description, you, you described on the, at the ridge, the area of the going extra 300 feet. Was there pretty much consensus that that seemed to be looking like it would work okay?
Yeah, in fact, we encourage the, the forest that if they have those types of conditions where it looks like it could be beneficial, that we encourage them to continue to propose those when appropriate. Not necessarily that it's going to become the new standard, but when you have the right area and the right conditions that allow that, it seemed pretty reasonable to everybody.
Okay, great.
This is Jerry. I just wanted to pick up on Tom's earlier description of the difficulties of doing the paperwork to meet whatever the paperwork requirements are versus the actual mark on the ground. I think everybody in the group kind of came to the meeting originally kind of questioning what they were reading, but then when they saw the actual marking, were, were surprisingly pleased with it.
Okay, thank you, Jerry.
I have a question. Kenneth here asked a question.
Go, Kenneth.
I'm not familiar with where this area is, but I'm, I'm wondering, is it to the east of the guard station? Does it go out as far as that private property to the east?
Who can answer Kenneth's question?
You know where Watts Lake is, Kenneth?
Where what is?
Watts Lake.
Oh, yes, I do know.
Okay, so it, it, it follows that road from, from, by the guard station and goes up that road.
Oh, okay, I know where you're talking, I know where you're talking about.
Black, Black Classic too, Kenneth.
Yeah, I know, I know that. I did some work in the eighties for the Forest Service up in there.
Scott Russell, you had a question or a comment?
Yeah, I wanted to make sure I understood what Tom said early on around that disconnect between the language and the planning document and the mark, and that, what, what I think I heard there was that when we described the treatment in our planning documents, we made it sound too much like a thin from below traditional and not what, you know, the collaborative has suggested as a prescription. But that the mark was good on the ground. Is, is that what I heard?
Yeah, Scott, that's exactly right. The, the written language looked to most of us like the traditional, we're gonna do a thin from below. And obviously, our white paper talks less about basal area or size tree or anything that's going to be cut and more about leaving the best, healthiest tree and then spacing off of those trees. So when we looked at it on the ground, and Dylan was kind of the marking foreman, marking inspector on that, and he's on this call, the crew seemed to get what we wanted, and they'd marked First 48, we believe correctly, and now this acre wood is marked correctly. So I think the, the message getting passed down, and I'll let Dylan talk about how he thinks the language compares on paper versus what they're doing out in the woods.
Yeah, great, thanks.
Hey. Yeah, as I understand it, it's, you know, the way that it's been described to the marking crews is crown spacing and choosing, yeah, the rank trees, the best trees, and just thinking, looking at the crowns and making sure that, you know, we have 60 to 70% retention at the end of the day. And it's, it's a little bit easier to me to do than a basal area prescription, but the problem is that seven people market several different ways. So the quality control is a little bit harder, but I felt like NRM actually marked Acre Woods, and our crews at the Watershed Center just inspected them. So the NRM crews, you know, it took some time and it took some communication between them, but I think that the prescription, yeah, if we could figure out a way to put it on paper that would make more sense for everyone that, that the collaborator would feel good about, and that we, you know, the markers on the ground seem to understand what you guys are looking for as far as we were at Acre Woods and First 48.
Okay, thanks, thanks, Dylan. Okay, maybe we should move on. Got a lot yet to cover. So last time, we had some confusion over Fuel Break Work Group naming, and so I kind of created a, a name for the other group, which is this group that includes the agencies, SPI, Watershed Center, RCD on this cross-boundary fuel group. So is there, and Joe seemed to be the one kind of leading the discussion there. So is there anything new there since May?
Not, not a lot, Pat. Thanks for, let me turn my camera on. I like to, people probably want to see me talk like everybody else. So not a lot. I would say I did talk about the Bowerman Ridge Cooperative Fuel Break between Sierra Pacific and the Forest Service, where we're looking at implementing that, but, but first, implementing it in a planning way, I should say. So this is going to be a third-party engagement where we're going to have the Watershed Training Center take the planning on this project. It's about 1,700 acres, integrated veg. I would say mostly fuels, but there's going to be a commercial thin component. And so, you know, we're excited to have Watershed Training Center engage with us and moving forward. You know, the third-party NEPA is somewhat of a challenge. It has been in the past, just getting the money and getting someone who's qualified. And we think that they're going to be a good, a good partner in helping us get through this.
So Joe, any idea of like timing, schedule, any of that kind of stuff?
Yeah, that's a good question, Carol. We have been working on an agreement. Agreements take an incredible amount of time these days, and I, I would say that once, once we have this agreement in place, I think we'll be looking at implementing fiscal year 21. That's what we're looking for, early fiscal year 21.
By, by implementing, do you mean that just the NEPA, the planning part?
Planning, planning, planning.
Okay.
Cool. Okay. So how about Chastity Trinity, other forestry issues, new things since May?
Let me, let me go ahead and take that, Pat. I'll kick her off. So Diva Kella, Phase Two, we have a decision on that. That was about a month and a half, two months ago. Pleased to report that. The pilot project, we're close to having a draft on that, I would say, in, oh, in about a month, month and a half. Chris Losi, our acting district ranger, has been working very, very hard on that. It's one of his priorities. And so he's made a lot of headway, and so I, I think with all the hard work of the specialists and his leadership, we do see the finish line. We're not quite there yet, but we're real close. So some of you may know that Chris is now the permanent district ranger on the South Port Management Unit. Not have known that, but, but that's been out for probably a couple, I'd say about a month and a half. But that's been, that, that was news at that time. So on my district, we, we have the WCF Fuels and Recreation Project. We're going to split that up into two projects, two phases. I talked a little bit about this before, but I'll talk about it again. And so Phase One, we hope to have a decision, very confident with this, the end of September, first part of October. This, it's going to be 2,000 acres. It's on the west side of the project area where we have a lot of fires. of the project area where we have a lot of fire starts, what we call the front door, Oregon Mountain Glenison Gap area. And those are the areas that we are targeting, um, to have a decision on. So we want to use the joint chiefs. We just talked a little bit later, uh, uh, a while ago about joint chiefs. That's one of the areas we'd like to implement our joint chiefs money. So, uh, I mentioned the Glenison Gap, uh, area, that's area, but that's critical, uh, for us to include. So, um, archaeology and botany, they, they have been, uh, inundated with other work and particularly archaeology, uh, have to know that this is an area where we have uh, world-class mining, um, homestead camps that just take a lot of time getting through. So uh, because of that, we felt it necessary, uh, to break this up. So we have some possibilities of implementation this late fall, early winter, going into the spring. And so, uh, we did receive some additional uh, assistance from Aspen Environmental, who will work on the TPUD right-of-way expansion. We have been fortunate to have them help us with some of the trails and, um, this is part of our project, part of the recreation aspect is part of this project to, uh, include trails that, um, that need to be classified as official trails and some new constructions as well. And so, uh, I think the bottom line is, is that, uh, the, the overall size of the project, around forty-nine hundred acres, uh, getting two thousand acres of this out the door, uh, sometime, uh, late September, early October, uh, we felt like that was necessary to do. As we work in this COVID-19 work environment, everything seemed to be put on pause, uh, from late February till now. We are getting out there, obviously. We've been mentioning field surveys. Uh, the field surveys have been slow to start backed up. Um, we do have mitigation measures, uh, pretty strict regimens, pro call, uh, for our staff to go out. It's something we have to work with. Uh, everybody is doing this from private industry to, uh, federal. And so I think given all the, um, the, the restrictions, uh, for good reason, for safety, uh, to keep us safe, I think we've done a remarkable job, uh, working with this, uh, to still make headway on our projects, whether it's in the field or in the office. Um, the Trinity Alps, uh, prescribed fire project, we still have some archaeology work to do. Uh, because of the COVID-19, uh, we were hoping to get, uh, some field work in November, maybe October. That still remains to be seen. The WCF project, um, is a priority right now, so we're putting our, our, our energies and our resources in that project. And as a reminder, I, I mentioned this, I think several collaboratives ago, that the, uh, the pilot project, the Dubicella Phase Two and the WCF fuels and recreation project are our priorities. We decided to focus, really hone in on these projects to get them across the finish line, and I think it's very improved. So, um, but I did mention the TPUD right-of-way expansion. Our, uh, this is third-party, uh, NEPA in which Aspen is taking, the survey analysis and I think taking further the, um, the, the NEPA entitlement, whatever that's going to be, but they have been really good to work with. Um, I think if this is a model, how we work with our, uh, our own specialists within my district, um, it's, it's going to look pretty good. They're very well organized and, uh, it has not been a heavy, a heavy lift on our side, working with Aspen Environmental. Uh, Crowe Bottom and Burnt Ranch, uh, these are projects that, uh, the collaborative knows very, very well. And so, uh, the Crowe Bottom is a project that, uh, it's still out there. We're looking at, uh, working on that just for year twenty-one, uh, along with Burnt Ranch. Um, we, we would like to have a discussion internally as far as really what is the priority. Uh, we're working on that internally and we'll share that with you when that, when we have more information. Um, I should say also that, uh, this is good news, that Brown's Phase Three, um, project will be, uh, commencement of operations, I have heard, will be this next Tuesday, July twenty-first. So Warner Enterprises will be moving his cutting equipment in, uh, this next Tuesday, starting in Unit Twelve. But I think there was, uh, some expressed interest in having a field trip on that project. If so, if that still remains, which I hope so, I would like to propose Thursday, I think it's, um, looking back here, uh, Thursday, the, the thirtieth, um, July thirtieth, to have a field trip out there at ten o'clock in the morning. So if there's still interest, we would like to do that. Our Forest Service representative, Kate Bachman, says we could, that would be a good time for us to do that. And we can take a look at, uh, some of the units that have been harvested, um, before and after. I think at that time, there will be some units that aren't quite cut, that are not cut, and then there's going to be some units that will be. So it'll be interesting, um, I think, to see how, what it looks like, um, after we've been talking about this for many years.
Hey, so maybe, maybe Forest Service and maybe Kelly, you guys can help coordinate kind of organizing that.
Yep, we can do that.
Yeah. Sorry, didn't mean to interrupt you, Joe.
No, that's okay, but I, I would certainly encourage people, uh, we'll try to maintain our social distancing and, um, you know, it's a project that I would like to see, uh, how the skating, we can probably watch a, a feller buncher out that time. Uh, he will, uh, he'll be in the cutting phase. Anyway, it'll, it'll be a great opportunity. I hope people, uh, would like to do that. I would also like to say, the, uh, I know we don't have a lot of time, but I'll be really fast. Uh, the Carr Delta Fire Salvage, uh, we, uh, I think we advertised around seven point five million board feet. Just a quick note, we got about six and a half million board feet. We came really close to our advertised volume. Uh, I feel fortunate because we advertised this about, uh, eight months after the fire. But anyway, all those sales, the, the Trinity Divide and Onion Sale, they're all done. They're all complete. So we move on. Uh, the Flat Fire, did have a flat fire. Um, I'll just say this, it, uh, we caught it at fifty-two acres and boy, did we learn a lot with COVID-19. Uh, I think we were successful and with all our procedures and protocols. Um, but this was an experience. This was a fire between Burnt Ranch and Deloma off Highway two ninety-nine and, um, started about two weeks ago, a little more than two weeks ago, and, um, uh, I think we hit it at the right time, had the right, right resources in place, and I felt like we were successful.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, it, can I have just like two minutes, Pat, real quick?
One, one minute.
One minute. I, I, so, um, Brenda Tracy, our public services staff over manager, she mentioned to me that, um, there is, um, a, a possibility of, of Sierra Pacific selling seventy-two hundred acres. Keith, I'd like to talk to you a little bit later, maybe next week about this. But of that seventy-two hundred acres, sixty-two hundred acres will be in Trinity County. It's in the north part of the county. And so, um, uh, we're working with Sierra Pacific, uh, the Trust for Public Lands and Pacific Crest Trail Association. Uh, I did talk to Keith Groves about this ever so briefly. Uh, we will have more information in September about this possible land acquisition, but I just wanted to throw it out to the collaborative that, uh, these are lands that, uh, that Sierra Pacific would like to sell. They have approached us and I think it tiers really well to some of our wilderness areas. Some of the sections, uh, are immediately adjacent to the wilderness, and so we're kind of excited about that. So more to come.
Great. Yeah, we, 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 we weighed in and looked at, uh, similar proposal maybe three or four years ago, and I think it might have been Timber Products or some successor company of Timber Products that did similar kind of sale. Okay, so Six Rivers. What do you got that's new since May that's not joint chiefs, not, not acre wood?
Okay, hi, everybody. So, um, Ted had to jump off and he didn't tell me that, so, um, I got nothing like a switch. That's all mine. Yeah, now I get to follow Joe with that great report out. Um, so, uh, something that, that's not joint chief. So, um, you know, I'll just start with the, the acre woods field trip. That was a great field trip. We had a, a great turnout. Um, it was my first field trip as ranger and so I was, you know, thrilled to have everybody there. We did a lot of good work in, in that field trip and we came out with some action points of, of what we needed to work on. So we had, you know, really good dialogue about the narrative. Um, and we discussed how, um, then, as Tom and others have pointed out about what we write doesn't, um, get the message across of what we're actually doing on the ground. And so Jeff Jones, our forest veg manager, subculturist, was at the field trip, you know, and he pointed out that we're often writing for those other agencies and so we're using the terminology and, um, you know, the, the sentence structure or whatever that they're used to, and it, it's meaningful to them for, for their consultation purposes and, and analysis. And so, um, you know, we acknowledge that that's what happens and, and it doesn't, we're and it, it doesn't translate well often, um, to others in our audience. So we talked about working on that to have a little bit more clear text in some of our, our writing, but yet still recognizing the fact that we do need to use some of those quantifiable metrics to discuss what we're doing because that's how we can measure things, um, for, for monitoring and how our, our, uh, partner agencies, you know, need, need that. Uh, whether it's basal area or canopy closure or stems per acre, you know, um, that kind of stuff. So, um, definitely something for us to work on that, uh, sort of a crosswalk with those metrics. Um, you know, it also came to a discussion point that, um, the collaborative's prescription needed to kind of be written out too. You know, there's, um, a lot of concepts out there and people have kind of just, you know, used it and ran with it, but um, you know, it kind of came to light that it's maybe not just like written down. Um, and that could be, you know, the collaborative was going to work on that, writing that down so that we would have a starting point that we could, the Forest Service could kind of jump off of and integrate that language in there. So, um, that was, um, you know, I thought it was a really, a really great field trip and I really enjoyed myself that day. So, um, so that is our next project that's going to go into contract prep, uh, correction. The Timber Sale Contract, is being put together by Ron Perry right now, our Timber Sale Contracting. He's not the contracting officer, Tara is, but he prepares our contracts for us. So that's the next one that's going to be out there and I'm not sure when it's going to hit the streets. You know, there's still a lot of work after the marking cruise is done with the road package and putting all that kind of stuff together and, but it is a forest priority, so that will be the next one that is coming out. As I mentioned before, during the joint chiefs, um, Nancy is still continuing to do her, her fuels work uh, on all those other projects that have been going, so that will continue on. Um, we were using, um, our, our fire crews are helping Nancy and, um, and, and forestry too, to do a lot of road brushing and clearing. So they've been out last week and they're going to be out next week. We had a little surplus with some of our, um, NFRG, which is the range, uh, funding. And so we're throwing that at where we have areas of nexus between some of our range allotments and those roads and you know, we, we always do more than one thing with any of our projects. We're very well, um, interconnected with all our disciplines and I really like getting, um, the most bang for my buck as possible. And so, um, I'm always, I'm always working an angle of how we can get people working together out there with available funding and, um, we do a pretty good, pretty good job at it. So, um, our next, so our next projects on deck that we're working on are not, um, are mostly in Humboldt County. And so, uh, you guys may have heard Rat Tail mentioned and the majority of that project is in Humboldt County on Rale Snake Ridge, north of the Forest Service compound here in Mad River, um, and then Buck Tail, which is just across the highway and Buck Mountain area. So, um, you know, I haven't really engaged the collaborative much on those projects. I've talked to Larry about it a little bit. He, he, and he said, you know, Kimberly Baker are interested, um, in those, but, um, you know, we've got a good thing going with the prescriptions and our workflow that we've already done with first forty-eight and with acre woods. And so those types of prescriptions and treatment types, um, we're, we're sticking with those and regardless of where our project is, because they, you know, we're honing in. Uh, Hayfork, um, Watershed Center, you know, as our field crew is really honing in on those prescriptions and how to mark that. And so, um, everybody loves it. Um, so those are the next two projects. So Rat Tail's twenty-one, we're getting close to scoping on that. There's a lot of moving parts in that project with PG&E gas and electric utilities and Forest Service water lines. Um, and so we wanted to take our time to get our proposed action rate as great as we could before we went out to scoping. Um, we're, for Buck Tail, we, which is about twelve hundred acres.
Hey, Trinity County?
We are, I'm, I'm sorry, did somebody say something?
I, I, I think there's some, some concern that we're, we're talking about stuff in Humboldt more than Trinity and, and we're running a little behind schedule.
Yeah, okay. So I guess the reason why I'm mentioning that is we are, um, out till fiscal year twenty-three, when we get to Robber's Roost, when we'll be back in a collaborative project. So that is really my key point there, is that you're going to see this district, our new work moving forward is going to be on those two other projects for twenty-one and, and twenty-two, and then we'll start Robber's Roost in, in twenty-two with the twenty-three deliverable. So
Okay.
That was, yeah, so that was my point with that.
Okay.
We're supposed to start oak restoration at ten forty-five.
Oh. Oh, wow, okay, good. Thanks for the time check. So, um, so anyway, I guess I'll just cut it short then, because I, yeah, I know we were going to go into oak restoration. Um, I really probably don't have much more to add to that.
Can I ask you a question?
Uh, yep.
When will logger be completed on first forty-eight?
Um, uh, that's a good question. I don't, I don't know, and I will say, and I'm glad, kind of glad you asked me about that. We, so the, the operator actually had a logging accident on Monday on first forty-eight. So, um, one of the contracts, uh, contractors with the logger, um, rolled his shovel. And so we responded to that, the Forest Service responded to that and, um, airlifted, participated in the transport to get the individual airlifted to Mercy. I, my understanding is out of the hospital, it was some broken ribs and stuff and he's okay. Um, but that, and I haven't talked to the contracting officer, but I suspect that that probably slowed things down a little bit. Uh, so, um, I, I can get an update on that and let you guys know what's going on, but I just wanted you to be aware that we did have a, a logging accident. So you know, this work, as you all know, is not without risks and that just, um, you know, was an example of really how dangerous this, this work can be.
Okay, well, thank you, Kristin.
Sure.
So Kelly, Nick, you guys got anything new to add quickly?
Hey, I'm sorry, uh, Pat, this is Jerry, and I, I need to, I'd like to circle back to Scott Russell on the Chastity. In the collective memory, he talked about his conversations about with Fish and Wildlife and they were going to finish up the draft BA in forty-five days. And how's that going? Did they finish it? What's the status of that?
So Jerry, I, I assume you're talking about the, um, programmatic fuel break, uh, consultation work we're doing?
Yes.
Okay, um, yeah, so, um, we have a draft BA, uh, for that, um, that, uh, that programmatic effort, which would, um, um, deal with, uh, ridgetoop community and roadside fuel breaks, uh, in a programmatic consultation.
Right.
Um, we, we've, uh, been working through the analysis, uh, and, uh, we're, we're at a, um, kind of a decision point about whether we try to complete a full consultation for all the work we might do in the next, uh, five to ten years and, and the take and jeopardy analysis associated with that, um, versus a, a framework approach, which would set a, a, a consultation in place, but that we would then have the take assigned at individual projects and we would actually do the jeopardy analysis at those individual project levels as well. We're, we're thinking that's, uh, We're, we're thinking that's, uh, um, maybe a more efficient way for us to, to get done with this. We're looking to try to get done in the next 60 days in terms of being, having this consultation effort done. But, uh, we, we've all been struggling with how you take on a really large consultation with the lack of clarity about exactly where these projects are going to be and, and, uh, you know, and then, and then come up with a, an analysis and estimate a take. So, um, good work going on there, working real well together, taking us way longer than we wanted it to. But, uh, we're, we're, that, that's the current thinking is that, um, you may hear us talking about going to a framework approach, uh, that, that really just is, uh, where you assign take. But, uh, good effort going on there. Is that what you're looking for?
No, thank you.
Thanks, Jerry. Thanks, Scott. Okay. Kelly, Nick?
Um, I'll go ahead and do a, a brief
Quick.
update real quick. Uh, so our crews got back to work finally, um, on June 1st. Uh, we started out with, um, an equip project. It was about 15 acres of treatment on Merle Bethke's property just north of town here. We will also have another equip, um, program on the McLaughlin property up in Ridgeville, uh, a little bit later in the summer. We have also been working on, uh, through CAL FIRE and California Fire Safe Council funding. We've been starting work out, out in Lewiston, uh, similar to the work that we had done last, uh, last year in Junction City. The, um, we've got two crews going with the COVID. We've had to reduce the, we only brought four people back on each of those crews instead of five so that we can get them into a truck reasonably with, uh, proper masking, et cetera, et cetera, and PPE, uh, procedures in place. Our, uh, agreement with the Six Rivers, uh, it was modification of agreement that we had from last year that added a bunch of Joint Chiefs money to, uh, the fields reductions. Where our, one of our crews is down there now working with Nancy Curran and will probably be working with them for several months. We also received an award from PG&E to do work, um, on private property, um, along Van Duzen, uh, road and, uh, Mad River Road, um, which will, uh, serve as good match. I understand that, um, that there was a proposal to the California Fire Safe Council from the, um, Watershed Center that included that area. So we'll probably either be coordinating with them or, and/or tag teaming on that project, should they receive their funding. But our, our money needs to be spent out on PG&E this season. So, um, that crew will probably be in Ruth most of the remainder of this season between those two projects. We also are, I guess, have our, uh, Brown Space Three Agreement that's, I guess, in GNA at this point with Shasta Trinity National Forest for doing service work on the, um, the areas that weren't going to be actually harvested. So there'll be a lot of, uh, fuels reduction, shaded fuel break type, um, treatment in that area with pile burning in the fall. And that's pretty much the short of it. I wanted to introduce our, um, real quickly, our, uh, project coordinator, uh, to Ozzy Welsh, who is a recent graduate of the, uh, master's graduate of the, um, Berkeley School of Forestry. And we're excited to have her and she's been working on quite a number of grant proposals. So I was hoping that she could report out a couple of the proposals that she's been putting together, uh, since she's been with us, uh, since June 1st.
Okay. Thanks and welcome, Ozzy.
Hey, thank you. Um, yeah, so I'm Ozzy and, um, I will be very quick because I realize we're behind schedule in the meeting. So, um, this week we submitted, um, a grant in conjunction with PLM, um, part of the fuel reduction up near Indian Creek, um, Indian Creek Road that Jennifer Mata was mentioning earlier in this meeting. Um, and that grant was submitted to the National Fish and Wildlife Foundation for about 105 acres of hand cut and piling work, um, in that area. Um, we also, um, submitted a, a grant application to the California Fire Foundation to get, um, firefighting PPE and training for, uh, one of our crews, um, to help work on some of that, um, pile burning that Kelly was just mentioning in the fall. And, um, early, before this week, we also submitted, um, uh, another grant to the California Fire Safe Council, um, for work in, near Little Brands Creek, Big Bar and Coffee Creek areas, about 70 acres total project areas in, in those three places. Um, what, today we'll be submitting a grant to, um, coalitions and collaboratives out of Colorado, um, to hire a coordinator for the district, um, which will help us get more grants in the future. Um, and yeah, I think those are the major great, uh, updates in terms of grants we've applied to. I know that was super rushed, um, but I just don't want to hold anything up.
And one, one
Okay. Well, thank you very much.
One thing to add to that real quick would be the, um, we intend to resubmit, uh, last year's, with some modifications, last year's, um, proposal to CAL FIRE for their CCI forced, uh, I'm sorry, fire, uh, prevention, uh, grant opportunity. It did include the area that we had, uh, received funding for, for PG&E as one of the, one of the treatment areas. So we'll probably end up, uh, substituting another area for that, but by and large will be submitted in its sort of, generally it's, it's, uh, same kind of, uh, structure as far as what areas we'd be treating with that funding. And, uh, my understanding was that, uh, they pushed back their submission of, um, uh, grant proposals and I believe that their, their deadline for that now is August, uh, 31st, if I'm not mistaken. So we'll, that'll be something that we put together for next month. Dylan, Nick?
Yeah. Yeah, I'll be brief. Our crews just started up in May. We've completed about 120 acres since then of hand thinning and chipping services for about 30 parcels, um, for private residents in Hayfork and Hyam Palm. These are through grant funded projects from CAL FIRE and the California Fire Safe Council. One crew is working, uh, in Six Rivers with Nancy, uh, in coordination with RCD crews and our masticator is also out of Swim Ridge on the Kelsey Peak Project, uh, soon to be moved over to Mad River, uh, or the Mad Ridge Fuel Break to do maintenance mastication. For forestry work, we, this year we have eight seasonal forestry technicians working on both the Six Rivers and the Shasta Trinity National Forest, uh, four wildlife technicians working with Kristin Odlin from the Six Rivers National Forest, uh, to complete NSO surveys on five different projects that's almost completed. Uh, for Six Rivers, we have four techs that are currently working on the Buck Tail project, soon move to Rat Tail, Shasta T, four techs working on the pilot project. Uh, I'll do an oak woodland update. Chance Callahan, who's our other full-time program associate at the forestry program here, uh, has been steadily working on oak woodland restoration projects, uh, through the NRCS, RCPP project. Uh, we successfully had two landowners get funding this year on the South Fort Trinity River. I think it's about 60 acres of oak woodland restoration work. That's it for me.
Okay. Thank you, Dylan. Any questions for Kelly or Dylan? Okay. So, um, I got, I, I've been getting a couple of text messages from Tim Saxton, wanted to participate in the discussion on the Bowerman Ridge Cooperative, uh, efforts, um, under the Canvas Committee. So I'm suggesting that, uh, can I do that real quickly right now? Because I'm sure he is a really, really busy guy. So I'm going to send him a quick, see if he can join back in, uh, in the meantime, maybe. Cause he has a meeting at noon.
Hey, Pat, I'm still here. I haven't hung up yet.
Oh, okay. Well, good. Let's, let's, let's go then. So this is kind of, uh,
I appreciate it.
in Tim Saxton. Thanks. Go for it.
Hey, Pat, I appreciate that and I, and I'm sorry to the entire group to have to butt in like that, but today is a busy day for Friday and, and I'm sorry.
And, and we're running late. So
But, uh, I would like to say well, to the group, I would like to say that, uh, this year, code enforcement's been up to Bowerman Ridge, uh, they've flown over it twice. Uh, we've, uh, gone up there, uh, 10 notices of violation have been issued to the properties up there. Uh, one property owner has come into compliance. The other ones, uh, so far have not. Uh, the seven day compliance period has gone past. So the other remaining property owners, those, uh, violations have been passed on to county councils. So, uh, those, those property owners now are in the process of, uh, of now being, uh, cited through the civil process. Um, we're, the county is, uh, and the, uh, the situation now is, uh, we're still under the $100 per day per violation, uh, fine period. So, um, the maximum period they go on those fines is 90 days. So county council at the end of that 90 day period then will be filing, uh, the, uh, the civil violations through the superior court and, uh, and then those will be moving through the, uh, the court process on that. I had a discussion with the code enforcement, uh, and with planning and, uh, apparently this is, this is, uh, been going back and forth and, and Joe and I had a, a brief conversation about this and, and I'll let him talk about this a little bit further. But, um, our knowledge is that even though this is in the NRA, these are private properties that still fall under the jurisdiction of private property and through the county. These properties have the option and of, of going into the county permitting process for legally growing cannabis, even though they're in an NRA. And I know Joe, uh, again, we had a brief conversation about this, about how, how this can be. And, um, and we are going to
So Tim is
I'm sorry. Go ahead. Who is this?
Tim, so hi, this is Carol. So, um,
Hi, Carol.
Our understanding, hi, our, our understanding is that, um, in the grant, in the opt-out areas, the only, um, legal, uh, applications were people who were grandfathered in, that there could not be new applications. And these people were not grandfathered in, correct?
The map that I was shown by my code enforcement, uh, unit is that this particular area is not in the opt-out area.
But in, in the ordinance, it is in the opt-out area. The NRA is in that opt-out area there within the boundaries of the NRA.
And within the Then that is, that's something that is going to have to be clarified then with the planning department, um, because again,
Yeah, that would be good. Cause they're, they're both, they're both in the boundaries of the CSD, which is an opt-out area and the NRA, which is an opt-out area, uh, you know, in ordinance, you know, unless there are grows in the opt-out areas that were grandfathered in. But
Right.
these guys weren't.
And, uh,
That'd be crazy if you could figure that out. Check on that.
And, and that is, that is part of the conversation that we need to begin right now and it's moving forward. And again, I, I just looked at the, uh, the map that, uh, my code guys showed me yesterday and, and they were specific. They, they circled it and go, this is part of the opt, this is not part of the opt-out. And I said, are you sure? And he goes, you know, this is just, this is the updated map. This is just what we got. And I said, all right. And so I'm glad we're having this conversation now. So, uh, our recent, uh, multi-agency meeting was canceled this much, this month rather. So, uh, I will bring that up at the next meeting and we can start going over that again. At the same time, I know, um, Joe was, and I were going to bring this up at higher levels to see what we can do from the, uh, more of the federal level to see what we could do in an NRA area with regard to, uh, the cannabis cultivation.
And, and this is
Great.
this is Judy. Carol is right on that NRA situation. So, um, certainly I don't know if a math is wrong or what, but thanks, Tim, for looking into that. And then also, Tim, are they citing the properties for other code violations, which they're allowed to do, which raises up the rate quite a bit?
Absolutely. I was talking to one of the code, uh, code deputies and he said one, uh, just one, one property in particular, he had, uh, I believe 10 violations on it.
That will put it at a thousand bucks a day.
Correct. Correct. But, well, and then, and then we'll see what happens at the end of that period, what actually comes about through the, uh, through the, uh, the court system.
Right.
But, uh, again, what's frustrating though, and I, and I get it, it's frustrating to the residents up there, it's frustrating to the public. Uh, this has to go on for 90 days and then, you know, it's a drawn out process and, and it is frustrating, uh, that these individuals get to basically continue on with, uh, with the growing season. They get to cultivate until the end of it. They get to, to, to complete the process. They get to, um, go through and, and make their money on this and then, um, they go on. And it's frustrating and I get it, but unfortunately that's a system we have to work with right now until the system changes.
So, um, Tim, Carol, this is Carol again. One of the questions I asked at the recreation committee meeting and Kelly asked me to, uh, ask again was since, um, the location that they're on is on Forest Service Road, is it possible to, um, request assistance from the Forest Service during, um, harvest to interdict the crop or, you know, as they're driving out?
Well, uh, Joe and I have talked a little bit about that. It comes down to staffing. It also comes down to, uh, you know, at what point in time? We, we, we don't have staffing to be sitting there 24/7 to wait until they decide they, they want to drive out of there.
Yeah. This, this is Joe. Carol and, and Tim, this is Joe. So Scott and Sarah and I had a conversation about this and, and Tim, yeah, thanks for taking the time to talk to me on that. But I guess it was a week ago. We will not be taking the lead as a forest agent doing this, but we will, uh, work cooperatively as we before in, in these types of situations. But Tim mentioned, everybody is, is maxed out. I mean, we have a hard enough time, uh, responding to, um, uh, the things that need immediate attention regarding law enforcement. So, um, I mean, if I was a, a landowner up there in the area, I would certainly be concerned too. But, uh, I think there's going to be some more conversation that's going to be had in this, um, maybe, uh, you know, sometime in the winter. But, uh, for, for right now, um, yeah, I, I kind of echo, um, Tim's sentiments is that, uh, everybody's busy and, but it is, uh, I guess, good to know that there were some code enforcement going on in there.
Great. Thank you. Uh, anybody else? Anything for Joe or Tim or Judy?
If not, I, I would like to, I would like to report just to, if, if I could just give one, one other, uh, brief, uh, report here. I'm kind of happy about this. This week, uh, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday and Thursday, we had an operation down in Southern Trinity. In fact, uh, the, uh, my folks just got back today, this morning. Uh, we served 13 search warrants down in Southern Trinity, uh, where we, uh, went to 20 plus, um, private properties. We, uh, interdicted and, uh, eradicated, uh, uh, over 150,000, um, plants, uh, being grown illegally down in that area. Seized, uh, over 4,000 pounds of, uh, processed cannabis and seized, uh, over a hundred thousand dollars in cash and, uh, also seized, uh, a, a number of, uh, illegal weapons. So, uh, I was, uh, I was very happy, uh, with, uh, with the results of that, uh, operation that we had down there in Southern Trinity. And it was a collaborative effort, uh, not only with the sheriff's office, but, uh, with the highway patrol, with, uh, probation. They assisted as well, uh, as the, uh, National Guard. We had some, um, help with, um, Fish and Wildlife and, uh, Forest Service. So I just wanted to report that, you know, we're, we're hitting them as, as heavy as we can. These were private property grows that, uh, had numerous, numerous environmental, um, hazard violations, uh, identified as well.
Thanks, Tim.
This is just the beginning. This is just the beginning. We've got two more operations that are scheduled as well.
That's great, Tim.
Very great.
You were, Tom, you were going to add something?
Yeah, just in talking about the Bowerman Ridge area, that main Bowerman Ridge road is actually a cost share road between SPI and Forest Service. And one of the concerns I always kept bringing up to the Forest Service is that since the cultivation began up there, that had turned into a year-round access road for those people with the amount of traffic going in and out of there in the winter time and the wear and tear on the roads being significantly more. So again, the Forest Service hopefully having opportunities to, you know, try and issue permits for commercial activity on co-op roads and collecting fees. Those are possibilities as well.
I love it. Okay. Good thought, Tom. Okay. Robert, is there anything, anything else from the cannabis committee? No? Tim, anything else?
No, that's it. Again, I appreciate you indulging me and changing the schedule a little bit for me. I do have a busy day and thank you very much. You know, if there's anything else that the committee has that they would like to bring up, you know, give me a call, send me an email. I'll respond as quickly as I can. Things are, things are going to be tight this year. You know, we're going to have a tight budget. I know the county's doing everything they can with the limited slices of pies that we're going to have available. But we'll do everything we can to help out.
Okay, thank you, Tim. And have a good weekend when you get to it.
Thanks a lot. You guys take care.
Yeah. Okay. Any, anything else on this topic?
I, this is Judy again. Hopefully I'm jumping in properly. There seems to be some legislation on the federal level that the region has been working on for extra money for public lands. And I don't know where that stands. Maybe Larry does, if he's on the call. Or maybe it stalled. So these things, as you know, are ever-changing. But there was some momentum, it seemed, to help on some public land efforts to beef up budgets and so forth. So I don't know if anyone else.
Larry, did you want to, did you have something there?
Congressman Lamal and Congressman Huffman jointly are pushing this bill forward. And so far, it's got, last I heard, over 20 cosponsors. So it does seem like it's moving forward and will provide extra funding for our Forest Service law enforcement who are completely outnumbered and outgunned out in the field. So bipartisan support. We'll see if anything can happen in the Senate. It seems where everything goes to die, but hopefully there'll be some action.
Okay, great. Thank you, Larry. Okay, so the much, many-time postponed discussion on oak restoration. So this was going to be kind of the watershed center, Six Rivers, NRCS. So I'm not sure how they organize themselves around this, but let them kind of work with Kelly to get this going. And we're running late. We had to schedule, I've scheduled a half hour for this. Hopefully people can hold back the hunger pangs a little bit at lunchtime and we can hear what we've got going on on oak restoration.
Krista, would you like to start it off since we pretty much had that all set up?
Hey, this is Nick. Can you guys hear me?
Yeah, Nick. Yeah.
All right. Well, I'm going to, I add some slides and I'm just going to refrain from using them. And I'm going to try to cede most of this time to Krista and to Erin, who have the descriptions of the two programs that they're running, working on, focusing on oak woodlands. So I guess what I'll reduce my, my sort of remarks to is, you know, I was going to try to describe and show you guys the sort of conservation, you know, concern and threat associated with loss of oak woodlands. But I think folks generally have a sense of this. You know, oak woodlands are adapted in general to frequent fire and to the fire regime that we had in Trinity County before Euro-American settlement, right? So that was a frequent fire regime caused by lightning and it was a frequent fire regime tended by indigenous people. And a lot of our oak woodlands are actually strongly associated with indigenous management. And a lot of them also were managed, were maintained historically by lightning caused fires. So oak woodlands are contingent upon basically frequent disturbance and fire in particular is the thing that sustains them. That's black oak and white oak woodlands that exist across sort of bottom lands in the county. And as you get into Southern Trinity, across the sweeping kind of rolling terrain of Southern Trinity County. And then black oak as a dominant component with Douglas fir across a lot of our sort of mixed conifer forests of the county used to be a historically dominant forest type in the county. And so both of those have basically been diminished substantially by that loss of frequent fire regime, whether it's putting out lightning fires or pushing native people out and eliminating their historic land management practices. So what does that get us? It gets us conifer encroachment. It gets us shrub and brush encroachment into oak woodlands. It diminishes a lot of their potential values in the mixed white oak, black oak sort of savanna, the grassland oak woodlands that we have around the county. That encroachment looks like a lot of shrubs coming in and in the wetter sites, it looks like a lot of Doug fir coming in. They overtop the oaks and the oaks die. You lose the grass understory component and you end up with a Doug fir thatch understory. So you lose a lot of biodiversity. You lose a lot of the productivity that animals depend on and that a lot of us value, a lot of people value. And so the other thing that we then have happening is this overtopping of black oaks across huge swaths of the forest. And that's that sort of fire-suppressed, thick, closed canopy Doug fir forest that is 80 to 100 years old, that exists across vast swaths of the landscape. So when we look up on a mountainside, we see a Doug fir forest where historically we had a Doug fir, black oak forest. The black oak there oftentimes now basically succumbing to being overtopped and the potential for restoration really being diminished. So these initiatives around enhancing oak woodland values, whether it's restoring or maintaining resilience in oak woodlands, that's a, that's really a North Coast wide and really Pacific Northwest and even California-wide problem. And so we're trying to tack on with a lot of other great work that the agencies are doing and that conservation groups are doing, trying to build out our work to sustain and restore oak woodlands in Trinity County. So with that, I'll just turn it over to, to Krista.
Hi, everybody. I'm going to get my presentation loaded here.
Okay, I was, thanks, Nick. I was going to do a little introduction. I know we're short on time. That was a perfect segue into Krista's presentation that she put together a PowerPoint that was sent out to you guys. He talked about the eco-type with a great description of the plant associations there and locations. And our presentation that Krista's going to give you is a little bit more about the implementation and the prescriptions and how we're treating those areas. So I just wanted to say that we recognize that as a unique treatment type and we're, we're calling that out in our projects as we go forward. You know, we've have around, we're trying to add, starting small, that 80 to 100 acres of oak woodland restoration in our projects that we identified these that can be rehabilitated and restored to, you know, closer to what they were originally. So recognizing that there were Douglas fir trees that grew up with these oak woodlands, the black oaks, and having those predominant, predominant Douglas fir out there with, with the oak. So that being said, I'm going to hand this over to Krista now and let her do her presentation. Thanks.
Hey, here we go.
Hi. Can everyone see it yet? I know it might be a lag, but. I'm going to make sure. It's, okay. Awesome. So I'm just going to go do a pretty brief overview. It's six slides of our approach to oak woodlands in our first 48 project. It's a total of 37 acres proposed or we're planning on treating in there. So I'm just going to jump right into it. Okay, so kind of leaning off what Nick was talking about, you know, with the fire explosion, it's allowed vegetation. A lot of the Douglas fir are encroaching into the oak woodlands. So our prescription would remove any of those conifers, given it be suppressed intermediate and co-dominant trees competing with our hardwood. By removing competing conifers, the hardwood should respond favorably to the increased sunlight. I have my cute little picture of the oak down there at the bottom. We would retain any of the predominant and dominant conifers as they were kind of like these legacy trees from the same cohort of these oak woodland. So these oak woodland treatment or unit also had a hazardous reduction, field reduction component to it as well. So Nancy and Fields group will go through their smorgasbord of different treatments depending on what's out there on fuel concentrations and what other hazardous materials are out there. So hand cutting of trees and shrubs, removal, conifer tree and large shrub pruning, flop and scatter. Nancy loves mastication and tripping, hand piling, any mix of those she'll go out there and do. And so these will need treatment prior to burning. As you can see, these pictures all come from the units out there in first 48. Lot of fuel out there. So most of these units have extensive brush and small diameter trees that would be removed. The pre-treatment will be necessary prior to the understory of burning. We want that low intensity fire behavior and the burn prep kind of highlights what I mentioned before, the hazardous fuel reduction, living of those conifers, hand piling, and then raking debris on those predominant and dominant trees that we want to preserve. And then of course, chipping and mastication. And then the fun part of the actual burning. We would want to restore those grassy areas through pre-treatment to allow for application of prescribed fire to rejuvenate grass and other grassland species, especially removing the encroachment, any encroaching vegetation. The low intensity fire would be allowed to creep into these brushy areas, killing the brush and small diameter trees, maintaining approximately 10 to 20% of the small trees in those areas. Burning would also reduce the noxious weeds by enhancing that native vegetation there. Not all the brush would be burned as we would retain some of it for wildlife species cover and all that for them. These areas would be burned more than once in order to achieve the desired results. Burning the area more than once would allow the use of low intensity fire, which would maintain that 80 to 90% of the overstore trees while reducing the amount of brush and small trees. Maintenance burn would be up to 15 years. And then kind of the importance, I know Nick highlighted that, but it's awesome for wildlife, forage for many species, enhancing the native tree and plant diversity, of course, removing invasives and reintroducing fire background to the landscape. That is pretty much it. I know we're short on time, so I kind of whizzed through it. But any questions, concerns, any of that, let me know.
So any, any questions for Krista at this point?
This is Keith Greenwood.
Pat.
Yeah, go ahead, Keith.
No, Diana. So what time of year is that going to happen?
The burning?
Please, yes.
Um, I work with our Phils, Pete, we're probably going to look at that doing a fall burn. So not this fall, but the next fall is kind of what we're looking at. Something else I forgot to mention too is working with our partnerships. I have a great partnership going on with the Mule Deer Foundation and they're providing grant money to kind of help with implementation too with that. So we're working with some of them as well.
Okay, be careful.
So Krista, I mean, do you sell the trees then that you're taking out, the competing trees, or what happens to those? Is that like a timber harvesting?
Yeah, well, we didn't include the oak woodlands in our timber harvest for the first 48, but that's definitely something we have looked into, especially we would need to remove those somehow. It could just be a Nancy show too. Not sure how we're going to move forward on that component yet.
So I think Keith Greenwood had a question too.
Yeah, correct. I guess as much a comment, and I don't want to overdo that privilege. But I think that we want to prescribe, and we're not talking about extensive restoration and where it's appropriate, let's supply it. It's a good prescription. We've done it ourselves. Just on a landscape level, I guess I, I'm concerned about how much of our landscape is going to be going back to an oak-dominated configuration anyway with the result of drought killing off a lot of the conifers in some of these stands, harsher sites. Also, the larger intensive fires and with a lack of ability to do a whole lot of intervening treatments, we're going to have a lot of stands that are going to come back pretty heavily to those hardwood-dominated configurations. And those seem to be areas that, you know, how much are we going to have of what type? I think we're getting to where we're getting to be less and less of a conifer dominated where maybe when we had more of a conifer component. So just a thought going forward.
Thank you, Keith. So any other questions for Krista? No? So if not, so you need to unshare your slides. Yep, there you go. And I think Erin, you're up.
I'm back up. Well, I think Nick and Krista did a really great job at explaining the north or the oak woodland regimes. And so I'm just going to bypass all of that and just, for the sake of time, just jump right into more of what NRCS has been doing on a programmatic standpoint. And so as Dylan had mentioned, we were able to pick up two private landowners for our North Coast Woodland RCPP project fund pool. So with that being said, funding with the two applicants is roughly around $73,000 worth of conservation treatment being implemented. And so we also have one year left of the RCPP funding wise. So it ends at the end of fiscal year 2021. However, it is, you know, shared, the funding is shared between Humboldt, Mendocino and Trinity Counties. And so the remaining balance as of today's date is roughly around $624,000 worth of RCPP funding availability. So with that.
What is our, what is our DPP?
Oh, sorry. It's Regional Conservation Partnership Program. And that's a subset fund pool based off of our EQUIP. So it's technically an RCPP EQUIP.
Yeah. So I have a question quickly for you, Erin. So $73,000 kind of of enrolled work, how many acres does that get treated?
Sure. So treated acres, I believe Dylan actually has a better number. I think he said it was cumulative. Correct me if I'm wrong, Dylan. It's about like 68, 60 or so. But in total, the property combined between the two landowners, it's about 240 acres. So of course, not all of that is actually oak woodlands.
Right, right. Okay, cool. Thanks.
You're welcome. Yeah, that's pretty much it. So of course, it is a competitive process between the three counties. So I just encourage NRCS, I mean, the watershed center team has been doing a great job helping us out with boots on the ground, conducting the resource inventories, helping us, provide us with the work that we haven't been able to due to a lack of NRCS staffing. So thank you, Watershed Center. And with that being said, yeah, we have, again, I'll say $624,000 left between the three counties. So hopefully we can continue our conservation efforts here in Trinity County to receive. So hopefully, we can continue our conservation efforts here in Trinity County to receive as much of that funding as we can. So thank you.
Erin, I have a question. So if a private landowner does kind of the same thing as the Forest Service, they take out the competing conifers, they can't sell those, right? If they're getting cost share money?
As far as like firewood or are you talking more on an industrial level?
Well, like, you know, sawlogs. If taking out a bunch of dug fir to reduce the competition for the oaks, then their option is just to let those trees sit on the ground?
It really depends.
I'm just wondering what happens to the conifers that go live?
Sure. It really depends on what the landowners' goals and objectives are. So we'll first ask them what they're trying to get out of their property, but we do have different treatment methods that they could either lop and scatter, or if they're more, especially for oak woodland component, they can girdle those conifer trees, for example, to create wildlife snags. There's pile.
I'm just wondering about the economics. I'm just wondering about the economics, like these, it used to be you couldn't sell a product that was harvested under an EQUIP project. So I'm just trying to figure out, you know, can you sell those logs or firewood or whatever?
Sure. I believe firewood is okay, but I would, I'll have to get back to you on that just because we had a lot of programmatic policy changes recently, so I'm not, so I'll get back to you on that.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you Erin. So any questions of Nick, Dylan, Erin, Krista? Okay. So moving along, a quick report maybe from Sarah and the Recreation Committee.
Sarah will tell you, it's been crazy in the NRA. The campgrounds have been full, the marinas have been crazy. It's just been packed up here in Trinity County with the recreation. And so deal with cleaning and keeping up. Am I saying that right Sarah?
Yes, definitely. I think you've pretty much nailed it. I think the big update for like Forest Service Office type stuff for the Trinity Lake area is that we did process the marina permit transfer to the new owners that should be in the mail on the way. But for all intents and purposes, they do have that permit and the ability to operate under the terms and conditions. So that is really positive news and something that our folks have been able to do, actually in a somewhat more expedited way due to working from the home and not having the sort of office walk-in traffic as much.
Does that mean, that mean they paid their bill then?
Yes, they did pay their bill.
Yay, thank you.
Yeah, really good news.
Cool. Okay. Any, any questions of the Recreation Committee? No, I hear a kitty cat.
Yes, she hears me talking.
I've had a couple of things. We had a Trinity Trail Alliance meeting last night and there was considerable discussion about the overuse in the wilderness areas. And it's really, really difficult to manage this summer with the number of people coming, COVID almost free Trinity County. I don't know, you know, if there's anything that, you know, can move forward to mitigate some of those issues or not. And then I also wanted to know if we could get an update on the rack process.
Joe, do you wanna touch on those topics?
Yeah, yeah. I'll start with rack. I just reached out to Paul Wade. He's our Region Five Coordinator. And it's Carrie Mills, who I mentioned before, I think in the last meeting, that she is on a term or a detail, not really certain of that, but she saddled with approving or facilitating the approval of 40 different racks right now. She indicated to me that we're in the top 10. She has not gotten back to me this past week. So I reached out to Paul Wade, our coordinator here in Region Five, and he is reaching out to Carrie at this time. So I don't have an update today from last week, but not for lack of trying. But this is one of my priorities, to find out where we are since we had the vetting back in December of 2019. Why has it taken so long? So anyway, I hope to have some more information this week. And if I do so, I will spread that information to those who want to know in the collaborative. I feel like I'm.
If you get it to Kelly and I, we can just send out a general email to everybody.
Yeah, I will do that. Regarding rec sites here, you wouldn't believe, I'm at my office here. You can tell I have my mask on or not on, but ready to go on should someone come and visit with me. But today is very busy at our kiosk in front. We are getting tripled or quadrupled the use of our trailheads this year. Not so much with developed rec because that's, you know, once they're full, they're full. Although people still try to park along the edge of the road and try to squeeze in somehow, that happens all the time. But as far as any mitigating measures, what we're gonna do about this overwhelming response, Sally and I have been talking. One of the things we have done is put signs along the road leading up to our trailheads to not park in these particular areas. And also to be sure that if somebody's gonna park, they have to get off the road. Sometimes there's very, we have difficult circumstances and where an emergency vehicle, should they have to respond to the trailhead, have a very difficult time getting through because both sides of the road, people are parking. And so, you know, some of our trailheads, for example, have a 40-spot vehicle capacity. And yet, on the weekends, I'm thinking going back to Memorial Day and July 4th weekend, I think we had somewhere around 130, 140 vehicles at the Canyon Creek Trailhead. That just gives you an illustration of where we're at, of the type of response we're getting. And so yes, I think somebody may, it was Carol, mentioned that we are the game in town with the amusement parks, movie theaters, and all across the state that's closed. We are open and people are coming here.
Okay, any, that answer your Susan?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, great. Anybody else, anything else? No? Okay. So the last couple of topics were update on fire season. I don't know who's gonna take the lead on that. But just a quick, how it's playing out so far?
I'll jump in if that's okay.
Sure.
Yeah, I mentioned a little while ago about the flat fire. It took off the very first hour and a half, two hours, it jumped from one acre to 52, 62 acres. We thought originally, you know, went up to 85 acres, but we've had infrared remote sensing that suggests it's only 62. But anyway, we thought we were off to the races. But we hit it, we hit it hard. The regional foresters, actually the Washington office's direction is to hit these fires hard arially and then put your ground resources in where appropriate. And we did that. But I think the message is, is that you can have COVID-19 mitigation in place, protocols and all the training that you've done, but there's nothing like a fire incident that will test that. Long story short, you can fight fire with the COVID-19 mitigating factors that you employ to keep people safe. You can do it. It's not super easy, but you can do it.
Thanks. Anybody else on fire season?
Hi Pat, it's Diana.
Hey Diana.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank Joe for that report and that they hit it hard arially. I really appreciate that. Keep it up. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Okay. And then the last thing I had on was just in case we hadn't covered it, but I think, I think everybody's really talked about it or around it, is how the COVID protocols are affecting field season. So if there's any, anything that we missed on that, this would be the time to kind of bring that up. Okay, that's good by me. And so, go ahead.
I'll just say, pace of work has slowed and the cost per acre has gone up for us. So implementing these COVID measures slows things down a lot.
I would agree with that. And like I said earlier, you know, we, instead of like putting five guys in a truck, you know, we're, we're getting four guys in a truck. And, you know, so it's, it's definitely slowing down our productivity to have to, you know, deal with that. And then having to show up early, you know, at the end of the day so that they can wipe, wipe down the interior of the trucks and the handles and all that kind of stuff. So it's definitely, does have an impact.
And as kind of an aside, Kelly, I wanted to say that, you know, you guys had a crew up in Trinity Center back in June, and the word was that they were really good about adhering to their, you know, their COVID protocols and still getting the work done. So pass that on to the day.
We put some fear in them.
Yeah.
Everybody liked their masks. They all have matching masks.
Yeah.
So anyway, so I don't have any other agenda items, this would be a time, if we still have members of the public that have something they would like to add, this is an opportunity for public input? So how about agenda building? So.
Yeah, so agenda building. Next time, an update on wildfire alert cameras. So from the Forest Service, maybe we find out what the status of that is on getting cameras installed, maybe on lookouts or towers or whatever.
Yeah, that, that, I would like to do that as well, Pat and Carol, but also wanna follow through with the Sierra Pacific Forest Service acquisition, possible acquisition of SPI lands. That should be on the agenda.
Okay, be a good one.
Can you hear me?
What else? Yeah.
Can you hear me? Okay, great. This is Diane Richards. Since we had, thank you very much, the Oakland Restoration Presentation, I'd like to be able to have a discussion within the Forestry Work Group of us having implementation of that in the shaft of Trinity. But my vision is more for something like 100-acre meadows to be restored as oaklands rather than taking, you know, a whole landscape. That was basically my vision. And as I understand, that's how a lot of the forest used to be a long time ago from speaking with families of past rangers. So I'd like to get that if I could on our Forestry Work Group. And also, not just the fire lookout cameras, but the actual towers, where are we at with that in staffing the towers? Thank you.
Sure. Thank you Diane.
Diane, if I understand correctly from talking to Sandy Faulkner is our Fire Patrol up here, she's been great getting signs out, talking to people about the fire. The lookouts are pretty much, at least up here, only staffed if there's a lightning fire or something like that.
Lightning storm.
Lightning storm, sorry.
Anyway, yeah, we can, we can have an agenda item on that. Anybody, any other particular topics that we need to have on the next agenda? Okay. With that, I don't have anything else. Anybody have anything else they want to bring up as we wrap it up? Just only 15 minutes left. I want to thank everybody, especially the folks who did the oak restoration presentations. That was great. And Kelly, as always, for running the keyboard, you know, and keep keeping things going here. So our next scheduled meeting is September 18th. So everybody have, have fun. Stay away from those trailheads.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks everyone.
Thank you everybody.
Take care.
Take care.
See ya.
Bye everybody.
Bye. Jeremy was on the call too.
So Pat? You still there?